Remind you, these way over there. Is that on? Here. Nobody likes that. Somebody else just tested and I can see which mine.
Hello, everybody.
I just turned on the volume on my computer, but I, I, this is muted. That's what I need to mute is this thing that's been muted. So.
It sticks a while. For today's helpful meeting. We do have public comments at the beginning of the city council. If you'd like to make a comment for council, I'd ask you just to come to the podiums. We can hear and see you. Just state your name and residence for the record and then share a couple minutes with the council that a lot of us can speak. All right. You might be have a public hearing and that's going to come up with a quick write after consent agenda and that is on the nuisance hearing. So if your comments are related to that, I just ask that you would share those comments back. So that they're recorded as a part of that public hearing. Otherwise, excuse me, I think.
This is, thank you. Hi there. This is just for a quick, I saw on the agenda that you have budgets for $5,780 for league of cities. That everything I'm thrilled about that, but I'm just curious as to because that's how you build relationships and find out about grants and things like that. So yes, yes, yes. From the city perspective, please, please, please. But if you have a chance to talk about some of the things you did or what it's used for, then just be helpful.
Sure, I can address that because it's pretty straightforward. It's our membership who's in essentially our professional organization, the city. We also participate in, we go, excuse me, the Coalition of Minnesota Cities. And the Association of Small Cities, they all provide primarily education advocacy and lobbying for cities. And so they're really active for us at the Capitol. Both the CGMC and the League of Minnesota Cities post date, the capitals are coming up in February and March. And they both have really great resources that are very accessible to the public as well. So if you've got any questions about why a city does something, there's usually some kind of a lead. Resource that we Google the question and then have Alan C. in it, you'll probably get a pretty good research, which is the kind of research that we utilize as members of council too. So it's tremendous. Asset to us and yeah, they're constantly looking for our purposes. Any other public comments? I don't.
I believe I'm supposed to state my name, Bill K. 224 Third Street East, Wall Street. I wasn't able to attend the meeting that was two weeks ago or so regarding 936 grant. But as I understand it, and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, there was an indecisiveness in regards to enforcing the ordinance on the property or not. And my point would be that property reflects on the city, the community and the citizens. The ordinance should be enforced.
Thanks. If you want to stay in the public hearings and reiterate those points, you sure can. We're here. Okay, something. It won't be too long. Any other public comments from the room here or the online line who'd like to hit off the microphone and share with council any of their thoughts? See, being jet, I'm assuming it does. All right. Hearing no longer the public comments. Do you have any changes or additions to the agenda from staff or council?
I just wanted to note there were a couple of last minute additions from what we published on Friday, and that was the fire department volunteers. And I, that's just a courtesy FYI and Darren will speak to that. And then just there's a, a small ambulance price increase on the consent.
Sounds good. All right. I'll read up those consent agenda in a little bit. All right. I'm not going to make a presentation because we have a nice presentation coming on accomplishments. But just thank you in advance for everything that all departments have done across the years, well as our. Seasonal employees and many volunteers and commissioners and board members that make everything work for the city. We really appreciate that. We had on the consent agenda, some vacancies for commissioning. We're always looking for people who are committed to doing the service and getting a couple of vacancies that might get just a minute. Otherwise, we had a sort of, without too much notice, which is common with our federal delegation, we had a visit from Senator Andy Kovachar. On behalf of the national bird legislation, which was really successful and I would say quick kind of for, for medical legislation, totally bicameral and bipartisan, which would be wonderful. Way to end the year or begin the year, whichever way you choose to see it. It was signed into law, Christmas Eve by President Biden. And it was originally brought to by Senator Brad Finkstad, our representative, Susan Hatterson, Brad Finkstad. Senators Andy Kovachar, Tina Smith, and they got lots of our person's support for that legislation that passed unanimously in both the House and the Senate, which as we all know, doesn't always happen. There was a nice celebration of National Eagle Center to commemorate that and we've got tons of media. So that's a fun thing to look back on if you didn't get a chance to catch those news stories in real time. Also, you may have noticed in the newsletter from the library, there's a virtual tour, which I thought was really nice, very simple. It's not some big complicated thing, but it's just nice for somebody who doesn't know what our resources look like. I imagine somebody with a little child or an elderly person who doesn't really want to make their trek once they see that virtual tour and see the many resources that they'd be interested to, to get their own person. So thanks to library for doing that. Other than that, committee reports, you guys meet yesterday?
We didn't have one. We'll push back. We did meet December 17th. Paid bills, a couple of items, the facade improvement program was a great success. We did some matching funds. For different applicants throughout the city and that were, that went very well and it was very successful. So that's been closed out. Port of ways into a workshop when we do a visit to La Crosse. End of January, I was redeveloped site down in the flesh, like what we're looking at doing for Highway 60. Phase one came in for the Highway 60 as well. Caroline, are you going to mention that or not? But we'll have to go to phase two. And then Caroline attended our, this winter meeting for the Minnesota Court Association as well, which essentially just talks about our legislature, legislature. The, as a group, how we look at kind of addressing our needs. That's about it.
Yeah, I imagine the continuing that goes to capital physically, but if you can't do that, if you've seen those LMC and CGMC dates come up and they don't work for you, there is a webinar, sort of overview of legislative. Priorities, I guess, sort of what we think has been out in the next session. I think either this company or the one, it's, it's.
Super all around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Super. All right. And also very dedicated in parks and streets, but again, anything for us? Good. And let's see.
Like which?
I'll give it to you.
Ryan, anything to add?
Um, we have our vacancies, our commission, and then our stuff will come up next conference, we do, and there are presented the rest of it. And stuff that I've heard.
Sounds good. Morgan Bay, because he goes online, Walter's spent her many years of service. I don't know how many, but she's been a long time commissioner. She's been out just mother things of her time. Appreciate her service. All right. And our administrative report.
I'm going to do that later.
Okay, sounds good. That'll wrap into the Department of Achievements. Okay.
Yep.
All right. So our consent agenda has our regular, the council minutes from 12:03, a library board member, John Hundy, his new application. Updated fee schedule, planning, current changes are coming in the future. 2025 updated and renewing annual board commission clients. You saw those lists, people are willing to stay on as well as a couple of vacancy. Which I should have advertised at some point unless people come forward or there's maybe some applications in the, in the file. Approval of annual licenses, where all paperwork and fees are properly filed. Gamma Kermit application for the chamber for Grand Ole Men and for the county ag fair association for Big One Raffles and Big Hill July, it's not sure. The temporary license for St. Felix for the fishing contest, fish brag, and there's Catholic schools we've done it. Then for the chamber for Grand Ole Men and Bourbon case. And once good, it was all sent out and approved in state. At the January warrants, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities membership dues, which are by 53% to 78. And new ambulance price increase, which has no impact on the CIP because of the one time ambulance service aid from the state. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's other writers, 11. Oh, thank you. 11 team, it's special. Okay. Also, our 12, our 12 18 special, 30,000 minutes, and I've heard of the volunteers. Mr. Washington Stan, right?
Yeah.
Who first or the second?
I'll second.
The second, Tim. Anything you would discuss? All those in favor to stay? Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Uh, Laura, yes. Willa, yes. Fred Meyer?
Yes.
Saw.
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Karen, yes. Thank you for reminding me. I never forget. Okay. And now a public hearing. So this is the item until July 11. Brought to issue, a public hearing on 9/6, we're losing. We have a preview of this in our special December 18 meeting. And I think Caroline, did you want to start this off? Thank you for this.
Hey, yeah, just to say that we're continuing the public hearing that began last month. Um, apparently so that Mr. Bennett have legal questions. So Joe is gonna make a few more remarks of what staff have done since we last met, and then we'll kind of sweep the floor to Mr. Ben Bennett or his legal representation. Do you have anything to add, Mike?
Yeah.
Well, actually, so is the public hearing that I went?
Uh, no, I guess.
You don't have to take actual public comment at the top of the hearing or she had to go on the whole.
To do whatever you want, typically you should ask city staff, make a presentation first and then ask Mr. Bennett to state if you want.
Sounds good.
Or, or.
Yeah, I think we'll do that. It'll be more common if you can hear from Lance and anyone that Joe can stick there and public comment if we want. So, Joe, if you don't have to share any further.
Basically, since the last meeting, we just monitored the property. And the only thing I could say is from last week to today, there's been some significant organization of, of some of the. Tractors and different things like that. But as far as. The amount of items scattered on the property would certainly still fall under the nuisance issues. So. Like I said, just going past today, even from Friday, I've noticed a lot of organization of what's there lining up some of the tractors and things like that. So.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
All right, Lance, we recognize you were your, your council. If you want to join us at the podium, we can hear to see you.
Hold on. My name is Kirk Knuezel, I want to turn it here representing Mr. Bennett. His name is spelled K-N-U-E-S-E-L. So you did have a chance to look at the resolution. I'm kind of coming in a little bit late on all of this. I haven't. Been involved with Mr. Bennett for much more than a week. I guess I would suggest that in my estimation, Lee Stark's representation progress last week is a little downplayed. I was there last week and I've seen it today. And I would suggest that huge amounts of materials have been moved. And are off the property. So I don't think that's really an accurate representation of what's occurred over the last week. That means that other items have been organized, placed in rows pursuant to a request, I think, from a staff or this property. So I guess I would encourage you all to look at the property as it exists right now. And I'll talk more about that in a minute, but. Looking at the resolution, I think, I think that there's problems legally. The. Property that we're here on the public hearing is listed as 936. Great. Pursuant to your zoning ordinance, in the city code, in order to enforce this. The city needs to punch identification of a violation. Notify via certified letter, registered letter, or personal service to the property owner. Now, in this particular case, your resolution contains a document dated September 19th that addresses one of these products. Property in 936 Grant Boulevard. And as you can see on your very own agenda, it suggests that tonight's hearing is a. Public hearing on the 936 Grant Boulevard nuisance order. There's actually three problems here, which interestingly enough are then referenced in number 9.2. Adopt City Council Resolution on 918 Grant, 930 Grant, and 936 Grant. Pursuant to 91.20 subdivision A subdivision 3, make the notice served upon. The property owner shall identify the nature of the nuisance, the violation of this subchapter in order that the nuisance be evaded within 10 days. And that happened with regard to property 936, 936 West Grant. That is not with regard to 918 and 930. And you can see that plain minutes documents that are attached to your proposal resolution. The notice from 919 identifies the property located in 936 and identifies it as a nuisance, a violation of our city code 91.15. And that notice goes on to identify the nature of the violation as follows. It says the following conditions exist at that property, so 936, that constitute a public nuisance under this code section. The name is storage of junk and storage of junk cars. So really what we're here for is public hearing on junk property and/or junk cars in 936. That's procedurally where we are. I'm happy to report that the three vehicles that are identified in the original notice, the 2009 Chevy Cobalt. 1999 Ford F550 motorhome, the 1996 Honda Civic are all up to date, currently tabbed and blessed and op. So when this first notice first came out, the tax has not been on the vehicle. But they are all property violations, tabbed and operable at this time. So from our perspective, that's no longer an issue. Those three were the vehicles that were identified and that situation is no longer an issue. In addition to the vehicles, the notice identifies someone's interpretation of what junk is. It lists junk and rubbish, including barrels, wood pallets, lawn mowers, trailers, and various motor parts. This is someone's interpretation of your junk rubbish definition in your zoning ordinance. However, it's an extension of that. When you look at the actual junk or rubbish definition, it's different than that. Junk or rubbish is identified as any material or substantive or substance stored in the open, which does not serve. Nor is it intended to serve any useful purpose for which it was originally intended. So as you can see, that creates a little bit of a problem with the embellishments of the definition of junk that occurred in the original notice. The notice includes barrels, wood piles, lawn mowers, trailers, and various motor parts. Let's start with this most simple. A trailer is certainly not junk. A trailer is a trailer. And these trailers are, are used for the purpose they're intended to be used for. And there's no ordinance that says that you can't have trailers on that property. Trailers do not mask the definition of junk pursuant to the zoning statute or the zoning ordinance, rather. Moving down with this. Barrels, barrels and wood pallets. There are no barrels and wood pallets on 936, nor have there ever. There were some barrels on 918. Those barrels are not there anymore. And I can show you photos of that. To establish that. I'm going to be referencing this. These photo a few times. And so provide those for the record we pass around. The picture of 918 appear on the second page. And if you look at that, you can see that there are currently no bands on that property that are stored on the outdoors. There also are now now, nor have there ever been, wood pallets at the address of 936 Grant Street. The property that's been properly noticed for public hearing here is that. There were some plastic storage. Bins located at the 930 address. Most of them have been sold since the original notice had been issued. There remain a handful of those, which are also visible in the picture. And just for reference, as you're looking at those pictures, 936 is the corner lot. And as we move away from the corner, obviously the middle of 930 and the far end is 918. Also in the list. Created by whoever created the notice is lawn mowers. Certainly Mr. Bennett has the lawn mowers. Lawn mowers that are able to be used as lawn mowers. And frankly, they're not all lawn mowers. Many of them are lawn tractors. Their intended use is as a lawn tractor and/or a lawn mower. Those items continue to be used in that way, which was their intended use. So again, when we look at the definition of junk. The, the definition specifically states any material or substance stored in the open, which does not serve. Nor is it intended to serve any useful purpose for which it was originally intended. That's just simply not true with regard to these lawnmowers. These are lawnmowers that are intended to be used as lawnmowers or lawn tractors and are capable of being used as such. The fact of the matter is that Mr. Bennett lives on a property that's zoned general commercial. It's been zoned general commercial for a very long time. Here's a picture of what it originally looked like when it was Wabashaw Cement Works. So for decades, this property has been zoned general commercial and has been used for commercial endeavors. Mr. Bennett and his family have occupied that property since sometime in the early 60s, I believe. Mr. Bennett's father operated a mechanic service, I will be building specifically a 930. He continues to engage in business at that address. Mr. Bennett is the sole proprietor of a business known as Westside Power Equipment Sales. Mr. Bennett specializes in lawn tractors and lawn mowers from a specific area. Specifically from roughly the early 1960s till the end of the 1980s. These are machines that are built better than machines that are built today. Thus, they have that. There are people who want these tractors. There are people who buy these tractors. Mr. Bennett buys these tractors. In fact, that's what he does. He buys and sells tractors of this vintage. As a property that is zoned commercial, there is nothing wrong with him doing that. If you look at your zoning ordinance, there are permissible uses for properties that are zoned general commercial. Sorry, I wanted to provide this as well. Just so that you don't. Succumb to an argument that these tractors are just in here willy nilly and nobody knows what's there and they're all just junk. They're not. There's an inventory of all these items and there's a value side. That was updated as recently as today. It includes all of the lawn tractors on that property. And those are all owned by Mr. Bennett doing business as Westside Power Equipment Sales. I expect some argument that might come up. Someone might say that Mr. Bennett is not actually operating this business. But I'm just saying that, that to dovetail him in on the zoning ordinance. That is not in fact the case. I do have a letter here addressed to the property in 918 Grant. Addressed to Westside Auto Repair Care of Westside Power Equipment Sales. Demonstrating that Mr. Bennett is actually doing business out of those addresses and doing business in the manner that I've represented. Going back to your zoning ordinance. When you look at your zoning ordinance, under permitted uses, there are several that apply here. And just for your reference, that particular portion of your code is 162.060. There's a chart that lists the different zoning areas and the permitted uses they're in. There's a chart that lists the different zoning areas and the permitted uses therein. If you look all the way third from the right is general commercial. And then there's either a P or a C or a Y. P means permitted, C means conditional, meaning you have to get conditional use permit and blank means it's simply not permitted in that zoning section. When you look at that chart, there are permitted uses for general commercial properties, including commercial retail. Open sales, service, and rental lots and repair and maintenance services. These are essentially the three activities that Westside Power Equipment Sales engages in. As I mentioned. Mr. Binner buys and sells these lawn tractors. He has an outdoor sales area. It turns out that the materials that he deals in are larger. They can't all fit inside, much like a used car lot. So this is an outdoor area where he can display his wares. People stop by, they see what they like, they see what they want. They approach him, he comes in, they come into the business where business is conducted. And they they negotiate on these items and they buy and sell them. That's an outdoor lot and it's a retail business. He's allowed to do that under your zoning. Interesting in your uh in one sixty two point zero six one. Uh there is a list of definitions of uses. And under retail, another one that's listed is garage. And a garage is defined by your code as any building or premises. Other than a private or private storage garage where motor driven vehicles are equipped, repaired, repaired, serviced, sold, or stored. And again, he's not storing these here permanently. There's turnover. They come and they go. But again, under garage, he's operating in permitted use under the commercial, general commercial zoning designation. I also wanna talk a little bit about. The effect of what occurs. If you enact this uh resolution today, if you're enacting an abatement. Um issue the findings that are proposed. Uh and go forward in that manner. Your zoning code requires Mr. Binner then if that were to happen. If you were to find that there is a nuisance here and you were to issue an abatement order. It requires Mr. Binner to appeal that within ten days. If he doesn't appeal within ten days, he loses the right to appeal. The appeal, of course, goes to the district court. So I noticed in the resolution that there's a highlight. A portion that has to be filled in and I imagine that there was going to be discussion today about how long to give Mr. Binner. Uh to bring the property to within a hundred percent compliance. Now again, I would argue that he's not out of compliance, but for the sake of argument, if you find that he is. It's my understanding that there's some appetite here for giving Mr. Binner some amount of time to get this cleaned up. I don't know what that is. I've heard July, I've heard other things. But it seems like there's some some appetite for that. And certainly Mr. Binner, you know, appreciates whatever anybody's willing to give as far as time. But you have to understand what happens if you issue this order today. The timeline becomes immediately compressed to ten days and there's nothing more that you can do about it. He has to appeal. And what does an appeal mean to you? An appeal to you mean, what appeal means to you is that you're gonna end up in district court. Uh and it's gonna be a long drawn out fight where we're gonna make these same similar arguments to a judge. And the judge is gonna rule one way or another. The judge is gonna look at issues like. Procedural issues. Was there proper services notice? Definitional issues. Is this stuff junk? What is it? You know, he's gonna look at all this. Here she is gonna look at all this. Uh and is gonna issue some decision. Now, perhaps the the judge rules in your favor. That may happen. I've known Mr. Flaherty a long time. I know that he'll advocate strongly for you. Uh and perhaps the judge sides with yours. On the other hand, perhaps the judge does not. Perhaps the judge agrees with us that this isn't junk. And that this is merchandise that an individual was selling. Uh on a piece of property that is own general commercial as he's allowed to do. What happens then? Then you have no reason. At that point, it's done and he's going to do what he's going to do. Now I bring that up because as I've mentioned, I think there's been a lot of work done on that property in the last week. Uh I think more of you have turned to pass that property than just Chief Stark. I think you've seen it today. I think you all recognize that there's been progress. Part of that progress is because I've had talks with Mr. Binner and we've discussed. Areas uh where cleaning up is something that should be done. So we've worked on it. I've only been involved for a short time. I will continue to be involved. I think that a cheaper route here, a route where perhaps you don't have to pay Mr. Flaherty and his firm to represent you. In district court uh is that perhaps this resolution could be tabled for a period of time. And and we can work together to see if we can come up with some sort of resolution. That recognizes Mr. Binner's rights under your zoning code. But at the same time, it addresses some of the concerns that have been raised. That being said, I mean, there has to be some understanding that this is general commercial property. There are people who live nearby, who live in areas that are uh zoned residential. But that doesn't change the nature of his property and it doesn't change his obligations or his rights under that zoning ordinance. So it's unreasonable for a person who lives across the street in a residential area. To expect Mr. Binner to be subject to the same standards that they are in the area that they live. When a person buys a home that abuts a general commercial area, they have to have some expectation. That general commercial activity is going to take place in that general commercially zoned area. Uh you can't come in later and complain that it doesn't meet your standards because you happen to live there. So even with all that said, I think there can be progress here. I think Mr. Binner. Uh is willing to work with the administrator or whoever uh to see if we can find some middle ground. And see if we can bring things into what everyone introduces compliance, as long as we're all accurately looking at the requirements and the rights of parties. And we can get to a point where lengthy and expensive court action is gonna be necessary. That being said, if if that isn't the direction that we go. Then we're gonna end up in court and and it's gonna be a mess. Uh a mess that nobody wants and uh that isn't gonna be advantageous to anybody. Quite frankly, that suggests the only, the only people that win in that situation are perhaps Mr. Flaherty's firm, perhaps myself. But that's not what we're looking for. We're looking to try and get this resolved in a manner that works best for the city, manner that works best for Mr. Binner. Uh. If anyone has any questions, oh, I know, I have one other, one other photo. I forgot about this. I came in a little late, but. This is a picture or three pictures of the nine thirty six property as it existed hours ago. Uh I do have an extra copy of that.
Yeah.
And if you look at that. You don't see any barrels. You don't see any wood pallets. You don't even, there were trailers there earlier, flatbed trailers, but again, I would suggest he has other records of that on his property. Uh but he's even moved those. Uh and the property is frankly clear of any clutter. That's the property that we're here to talk about today, nine thirty six. That's the property the city has noticed Mr. Binner is, in your estimation, in violation of the nuisance ordinance. It is clean. If you decide to move forward today. With the resolution that's before you. In my estimation, there is going to be problems. There are service problems, procedural problems, and definition problems. Why don't we try to work together and see if we can come up with a level of independence? If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Would be nice to know your values.
I have questions.
Sure. Um so I'm looking through Chief Stark's road to notice letter. It's got a piece um. Yeah.
You guys are good at seeing your proposed resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I had to shut my computer down and then restart, so I don't have, I had already talked into it.
Okay, so the notice is dated September nineteenth and sprung Chief Stark, I believe. And it lists one property, so. Um, you know, that is a probably, so the resolution, I looked at the resolution. This is probably not a resolution that's off three properties. In addition to a nine thirty four that doesn't exist. Okay, so I guess the question for you then would be. You know, they can, you can table this and be issued a notice, which seems, I mean, they're all kind of the same property that are right next to each other, so we can do that. Would you prefer to do that and table it a month? Or would you prefer to move forward now away from that?
Well, I guess ultimately that's for your decision, whether it's our preference or not.
Well, I'm gonna tell them, I'm gonna tell them to table it unless you. Are gonna wave that or see you go with that.
I I I'm not waving that procedure effect, uh but I think tabling it is a good plan. I don't, frankly, tabling it a month uh is a good start, but I think you, if if. The council really has an appetite for trying to get this resolved amicably. You also have to recognize that it's January in the zone. I mean, there are going to be limitations on what can be done in a month. Um, you know, Mr. Binner.
We've been working on this since September nineteenth.
Fair enough, but so, I mean, at this point, we're where we're at, uh and.
And so then.
Trying to look forward, not not backwards.
And so the resolution then states. Uh nine eighteen and there's a PID number there, nine thirty. This is maybe more a question for Caroline, but nine thirty PID number, nine thirty six PID number.
Mm hmm.
So are those the properties? Are those the correct PID numbers on the resolution?
Well, they're all in part of an exhibit B in the resolution, so. I mean, I'd have to go back and forth, but right here we have nine thirty, the PID, the PID number. But there's nine thirty again.
So the numbers are correct, the address is wrong. The numbers are, the PID's are correct, the address is wrong, I just wanna make sure.
That's what it looks like to me.
The property address was the lower, you go down.
We can argue about that.
The procedural stuff.
Well, that's that's my concern is the procedural stuff, so I was making everybody email about this to you guys when you asked me about this question.
Mm hmm.
And I said you need to include all of it.
Uh huh.
Um. And I asked you guys this back in September, so, but I think you intended to do that. So there's that. I mean, you know, the the notice letter should have included all three PID's. Um, is that a procedural defect that would really matter? We can go forward? Probably not, but you know, it's a procedural defect, so there is that. Um and then. Um I don't have any other questions, I just wanna make sure we're clear on what's done. Yeah, what the argument is and. Um and that, so, okay, that's all I have.
First, I'm here on the line here to be still, I think I need to get a pronouncer to feature state I'm asking you.
Kneel.
Please. Any questions for Mr. Kneel? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, certainly, any questions or comments from the public? Uh I need to open the media, open the public hearing and it is six forty PM, so I've opened the public hearing to anyone who should comment on this matter. Again, if you just drive a bit further, you can hear your comment. And then we'll give a minute to anybody online, also, which is to speak something related to this uh agenda. Go ahead.
I know I spoke briefly at the opening of the council meeting, based on the presentation now, I wanted to say a few more things. And I don't wanna discuss or argue the the points that were made, use utilization of devices, et cetera. My points are about four of them. One, there's a responsibility to the community to present any business. In that reflects upon the community positively. We don't need clutter, et cetera. Now, we can, we can discuss the definition of clutter in house. One person receives the word versus the noun. That doesn't matter, okay? A business is a business. Any business owner typically would be expected to conduct his business. In a socially responsible manner that reflects upon the community. This doesn't, in my opinion. Okay, laws and regulations and rules aside, there's a social contract here that occurs. And we all have that responsibility, whether it's a business, whether it's my home, whatever it is in the community, it reflects upon us. This doesn't reflect upon Watacha the way we would like it to be. And we can again look at laws and say, well, we're within the law. Great. I'm so happy. That that doesn't count for me and that's myself speaking. The fact that cleanup has occurred indicates to me that someone is acknowledging themselves that something needs to be done. Okay, great, then let's continue with it and bring it to a point that that works for everyone. Um. Yeah. Absolutely.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to make a comment on this?
Seems helpful, but we don't talk. No, I'm Kay Kay. Well, not about these sort of issues. Mr. Binner, I understand, and my heart goes out to you, but this is really a community issue with that, so I'm. I'm gonna take a look at, and I've looked at this from economic, economic development point of view. I understand that what the attorney said, that the only people that probably are gonna invest, but on the attorneys, having gained some legal issues myself, they won't make a lot of money. And unfortunately, it's gonna come out of your pocket. It's just the way it is. Here are the three five things, really, when I did a look at it from Watacha point of view. One is its economic development. Um companies are gonna, that wanna come in and invest in in into Watacha and desperately need that. They will evaluate the town as a part of the decision. If the town is gonna see this neglected, they may pass it over to someone that's five hundred or four. Just take a look at what's going on in the general. So we really have great competition around here. And some towns like purpose falls have um. Notification programs to make their town attractive to investors. Uh you do know that there's a decline in property values. It could be up to twenty percent. Um tourism, we really want to be seen as a vibrant tourist place with our wonderful river. Third, there's psychological community impacts. There's something called a social disorder theory and that links junk or negative things. That could increase or let leave people think that the residents don't care. We attract petty crimes, lawyer, lawyering offenses. And we've got community pride. We know that. We love Watacha. We know you love Watacha. We're asking you to become part of us and clean up. And we want to attract new residents. We want people that are gonna come in and thrive. We really care about this. So I'm asking the council. This started on the seventeenth or nineteenth, excuse me, of September. I'm asking you to take some action now.
Thanks, Kay. Do you have any other questions, members of council? Peter, Jeff, did you have any questions or want to say anything? I didn't pass the mic to you. I'm sorry about that.
I'm good.
I just have a couple of comments. Um I know the lawyer had mentioned that he has trailers there. Do those trailers all have, are they up to date on their tags? Um another issue is I've been driving around past that place for probably ten years. I never knew it was a real business called Westside Power Equipment Sales. There's no indication to any passerby that there's a business there. It just looks like a junkyard. Um so how long has his inventory been sitting there and uh? Does he have any evidence of retail sales for the past year or two years? Because I mean, I haven't seen anything. Because, I mean, I haven't seen anything really move out of there, maybe, maybe shuffled from one location to the other. I mean, it's, it's an eyesore.
So, I think he's asking questions.
Yeah, I'll have those questions answered, I, I know they're not the essence of the task for the trailers. Did you wanna respond to those other, as Jeff messes up?
Sure. As I understand, the trailers that are there, that require to be, yeah, and a lifetime registration, and then sort of offers stickers around the, uh. Around the, uh, the portion of the trail that sticks up in the front, uh, so, I get the top, there you go, thank you. Uh, so, I think that answers that question, as far as evidence and sales, you know, we certainly break his books in here, but if you wanted to hear Mr. Bennett testify that he has bought and sold, uh, trailer or a tractor, so over the course of the last year, you can certainly, please give me an estimation. Uh, I, I will say, uh, that, uh, Mr. Bennett, uh, has another occupation. Uh, and so he, uh, is transitioning into this business and expects, uh, additional sales going forward. Uh, he had to accumulate some inventory before he was in a position to do all that, and that's what he's done, but he's been selling. Uh, Mr. Bennett, I think, uh, you would agree that sold something regularly, at least monthly, uh, throughout the course of the last year, right?
Oh, yeah, it's like a common goal, yeah.
I don't know if that answers your question or not, I, I will say, you know, I drive by at thirty miles an hour, it strikes me that it's gonna be kinda difficult to know whether the tractor that you saw there yesterday is the same tractor that was there six months ago. Uh, so, he has serial numbers, he has identified, uh, units, uh, and he's moving them all the time, or turn. Uh, so to say that there's not is completely baseless.
Any other public comment?
I'll just comment, uh.
Yes, please, Jess.
Uh, my name is Chanelle Layle Levett, two twenty-three Western, and I wasn't gonna say anything, but after listening, um, to the attorneys, I, I know that we wanna move forward and that it wants me to happen, and I'm, and I'm just here, um, recently, I haven't been, um, helping with this through September, when, when this all started. And so I know you've done a lot of work, but what I heard the attorney say is, if this goes, if this goes nowhere tonight, really, truly, this is gonna end up in district court, and those procedural, those procedural aspects are, are real. I, I think you brought up some great, great points, so unfortunately, where we're at is, to go forward today is gonna throw the gauntlet down, and we're done. And then all of a sudden, we're gonna spend a ton of money, um, you know, defending, defending this, and Mr. Kneese is then is gonna go forward with some actions that he would have done anyway. I, I, I know him to be a good attorney and a good guy, and I just, I, I think, unfortunately, where we're at is, we have to sit back and, and wait and work together to see how far we can get, um, before we throw this into district court.
Any other public comment? I'll call last time, any other comment?
I just, I wanted to answer an earlier question, so I was able to check begin, and the PID P numbers in the resolution on the top, right?
So the notice.
Yeah, so the notice letter that was sent, yeah, okay.
So the notice to the owner is where that. One parcel's listed in the turn out.
And I think that just re- re- reiterates my point, is that there, there's already an argument being made. And then once an argument is gonna be made, it, it takes somebody to decide it, and that's gonna be, and that's gonna be the judge. So if, if, you know, I, I understand that, that you're saying, because I'm, I'm sure that you were probably part of helping write the letter, the notice and everything, and. Um, but if it, if it was deficient as to, as to the ordinance that Mr. Kneese was saying, it, it's, it's, it's something that, that they're not gonna waive procedurally. And I'll say, if you were here, I think you maybe were here last time, council convened on this matter, I don't think the procedural pieces are really our concern. There's a spirit of wanting to see this happen regardless of any potential court involvement, and maybe we really wanna see this rectified without the property owner, and in the me, in the meantime, the city taking on expense that we don't wanna incur, that we will recoup very slowly, we don't want that. Um, I can first of all say that I've seen progress, I know I passed by the nine, notice the oil barrels, I'm the first of those, that was, uh, noticed in the letter, and the first that identified PID. Those are, as the photo illustrates, uh, I noticed that the vehicles that are there are still there, and it sounds like those are tapped properly, I don't know if the vehicle says any comment about property getting noticed. I, I noticed Mr. Bennett been working when I went by four thirty, so, uh, we wanna see this rectified without cumulative action, that's what we want, we wanna see that this owner be able to not only come into complaints, but stay in complaints. And I think what we know over the period of, I would say primarily a year, although I think the complaints take back for more than a year, is that while there weren't wood pallets on the property, you noticed in the letter, there were wood pallets that accumulated higher than one of the commercial garage doors in a, in the period of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so we're responding to a number of complaints that have led to this moment. Um, I think we all appreciate this is a commercial property, and there's some nuance there, and even the, you know, police staff had to kind of wade through. Um, yeah, it was, you know, the transposition, this is a commercial property, it, it is, it has certain provisions that are out, and I'm getting this, uh, piece of the code, six, one sixty-two point zero point zero. And I also recognize that while you may with the untrained eye not recognize these vehicles to be working, or, or may be able to work in their intended function, but there's an argument to be made that they are, that's hard for us to know, I mean, we're not able to sort of show and test drag them, so from the, uh, untrained viewer, which is the most passerby, it doesn't look like they're usable, maybe it doesn't look like how you use car lot, where you understand the vehicles to be ready to test drag, it doesn't appear that way. Uh, in terms of the number of them, and again, this is on, this is on the eastmost parcel, not the one that was noticed in the letter, but the eastmost parcel that was in the, in, or, uh, presenting the resolution. I counted in a picture from Google, which was twenty twenty-three, that there were twenty-eight smaller units, riding tractors and mowers, and today there were about twenty-one. So while there's substantive improvement in some areas, the barrels, the pallets, which we absolutely appreciate, there aren't in other areas, and I think you made a case that those are not, those are not items to be cleaned up, what's gonna be a challenge for us is to not particularly, I don't think there's any optake, please to take on an inventory and then monitor individual items, that's not sustainable, so. We should entertain a discussion, I'll call for one more, um, one more kind of public comment, we should entertain a discussion about how we wanna proceed, whether we table this, if there's procedural issues, and that for the discussion with Mr. Bennett, you know, offline, you know, with staff. Uh, but I think where we left it last time was, we definitely wanted to hear from Mr. Bennett, which was our first opportunity in that special week. And he acknowledged it, he liked that council president, and that wasn't possible at that meeting, so here we are today, there's not an indecision, just to be clear for the public. I don't think council left here with indecision on the matter, we're trying to be responsive and responsible to procedural requirements that are set for us, and even a few that we were brought, that were brought to our attention today. So we have, whilst, you know, uh, in a, in a, uh, social way, you know, we might disagree with the way that the items are presented, we are behold to the code. So we can't come up with our own definitions, we have to be responsive to our actual ones, and the same is true for any type of property, not just commercial property. Uh, so when we're looking at a nuisance on a residential property, you'd have to be specific to that, to that code as well, so. With that kind of acknowledgement of what we've heard, I'll ask for one more time for public comment, and let's unclose the public hearing.
Oh, oh, I will, this is KK, two two four, Kurt Street, is, I want it to be good for Mr. Bennett. But I want it to be good for the city as well, and I don't want it to get dried down in the details about how to discuss what's junk from something that's really good, we'll get to nowhere with that. Okay, we have a lot financially at stake in Wabashaw and making this done, it's not about just the property, and you know that, you're smart enough to know that. It is much bigger ramifications. My code is gonna go, and they're getting, but I wanna make sure something is done.
If you have an issue with the code.
I don't have an issue with the code, I have an issue with interpretation, we're good.
We get it, Kay, we get it.
All right, we are, we are absolutely accountable to the code as, as elected officials, and we don't have to interpret it the way that we wish, so we do have to take a look at that word by word initially.
Understood.
So, all right, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask six fifty-five.
So Mayor, can I just, I missed my hat, so, uh, questions, um, a couple of things, number one, the code is the code, that's right. And I said this at the last hearing, you could just simply amend the code to put all kinds of restrictions on properties like this and businesses like this. And then go clean it up based on those new regulations, you're gonna absolutely do business regulations, recommended city to do that fast, I looked at this a couple of months ago, I mean, most cities for businesses like this, they regulate a lot more than your code regulations, so you always have that option. And the bottom line is, if you wanna clean this up, and to a certain man, you're gonna be able to do that, the question is what the path is to do that. Um, and then the second thing I would say, and so if you want, actually, I'm not saying it's not a nuisance, by the way, in this thing, you know. Um, that is not organized in business, like you would see in a research business. Um, the other thing I noted in the, in the notice, when it was originally drafted, I didn't comment on this, but you have other code provisions that apply to declare this a nuisance other than what was noticed. So you could claim it's junk, which is probably junk. Um, or you could claim that it's a general nuisance under general nuisance provision. Uh, which is a, uh, condition that maintains or permits a condition which unreasonably annoys, enters a danger of the safety of all morals comfort proposed of members of the public. So you could, you reissue the notice, I mean, I suggest that you issue the notice, you could add that provision, I mean, these provisions all kind of overlap, so. I mean, we can argue about what John argued to say, whatever it is, the accumulation of as much as is accumulated there is not, is not a nuisance. So there's other things you have to do, I, I mean, in terms of the notice, like, would that be a procedural defect? I don't know, um, you know, the same, the same person owns all three properties, so I don't think it's an issue not getting noticed, kind of notice. Um, you know, it is true that there's nuisance conditions on all three properties, and when I did, I didn't draft either the level earlier in the meeting, but I did help with resolution. Um, Caroline drafted it, I, I marked up, and I said, well, yeah, you gotta make sure you're specific on all three, you know, noticing all three properties. So, but the bigger issue here, all of that is true, so if you wanna pursue, just drafting a new ordinance to enforce against the property, we can do that. If you wanna renotice the other nuisance provision, we can do that. Um, but the bigger issue is the fact that the condition of the property is not the same now as what it was when this was drafted. And so that's how I told, the reason the chief testified, they went out there, it's because I told him to do that, and the reason I told him to do that is you always have to do that with a gap in time between when you draft something and when you're gonna move on, so you know you're, you're operating in the existing facts. And for example, the resolution has the actions of photographs, right? Um, but those photographs, and I think the resolution does state the date that they were taken, but that isn't, you know, I think it's just enough work, it's not, makes sense what the mayor said specifically just now, about the number, but count the number.
Was there influence?
Influence, whatever, so, my point is, is you might not have changed enough for your, like, it has changed enough where I think that you need to reinvestigate it to make sure that the resolution is accurate, is the condition of the property, what they adopted, and you always need to do that, a lot of times how that is done is um, you would make a record, this is the record of the proceedings, what we're doing right now, so what you'll do is, you'll take updated photographs and bring them and submit them to the record, and then they would be made part of the record, and you could adopt the regulation by adding the, with an additional order or something. Um, but I think, you know, so I think there needs to be a little bit more investigation because the condition has changed, uh, from that perspective, and then the notice letter. Yes, it didn't list all three properties, that's fairly taken, since they're all three owned by the same person in contiguous, and it is clear that the city and town is clear to them. Um, but then the letter didn't state that, and I would like to show you the general, the general public's nuisance, uh, point of view. Uh, so that, that would be mine, so you can discuss it, and. Or if you want, if you're inclined to just table it, which is my recommendation, you could just not discuss it tonight. Table it, and then, and then we'll proceed with a new notice. Uh, noticing next month's meeting, or whatever, um, you're changing to one, yeah, so next month's meeting, um, so that is another issue, there may be any questions about that.
So what, what happens with this notice, it just, we don't do anything, let it lie, or do we?
Well, I think, well, no, I don't think so, I think you supplement it, just writing a new notice that this is to supplement the firing list, and.
Just clean it all off.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, let's say you were to, you were to declare that, you're not gonna declare this a nuisance because the notice is incorrect. You could do a new notice tomorrow and redo the process anyway, and so this would, that's essentially what we'd be doing, so I think you should do that. I think that was an oversight, it's not, it wasn't an oversight, Caroline achieved when we did the resolution, I mean, we realized there's three properties, and we checked those boxes and did, did that, but. Um, but the notice was sent so much earlier. Um, so, so there's that, uh, and then I think I would just want direction, I guess. Well, that's what I have to say, what is there any other, other than that?
Well, I, I am personally a little confused, because there was some discussion about this compromise as well, and so like, where are we at with that if we then table the discussion on do we want to provide an extension beyond the ten days at a future meeting, or?
I had actually, I think I suggested something like that last meeting, where we, we have this resolution where we were gonna set a date. You know, Lance has to have it cleaned up, or by, it was June or July, I forget which date. And my suggestion was, well, instead of passing the resolution, which enacts this date. And then, of course, ten days later, we get appeal, then appeals court, I feel that's where we're going. Um, we just asked him, we table it until that date is set, so then, we don't, we don't have this hanging out there, we don't have a court action hanging out there. But we still give him the same exact timetable to see a result, and then upon seeing that result in June or July, we can decide do we need to move forward with this, and, you know, go to court and, and, and just do it, or if, if it's resolved by that date, then we're done. Um, and then we work together, and, and we don't have to, to pursue court or enacting a nuisance order on a citizen, so, that's, that's where I, where I'm at, um, that's kind of what I thought about last time as well, so. I would just suggest, or I think you can make a motion, that we just table till, let's say, June meeting, and then we work with Lance, or, I mean, we don't even have to work with him, we can just let him go and, and see what, see what he can do, and at that point, we'll reassess, and. And then at that point, if it's not satisfactory, then you could say, now you have ten days, so it's not like we gotta give him another year to clean it up. So, so I think what you're saying, I mean, I, I think people are like, you know, so, you know, color, so originally, you're gonna do the resolution that it gave, you know, thirty days, or sixty days, or ninety days, or whatever, to clean it up.
That's what was on the agenda, yeah.
Correct, the issue with doing that is that you can appeal it before that expiration, that if you give ninety days, you can appeal it, right?
Right, right, react it within ten days.
Right. Um. Yeah, so you can do that, I mean, that's what you wanna do, I know, I think if you don't move forward, nothing's like a battle, probably not a lot, but we can try it, I mean, you can always, you can always abandon ship in a month if you don't have a promise, or whatever, I suppose.
Right, I mean, yeah, we don't have to, we can table it, and we could always, even if we say table to June, we can bring it up early in the meeting, and correct our desire, so that's what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, so, I, I would say, you know, that was our original thought, was give it till June, July, so I make a motion, we just table it till June, let him do it, give Lance a chance, let him do what he can do, and, um, if by May, someone's not satisfied, like, bring it back up, and, and we can, we can do this, but.
If you're gonna do that, then what I would suggest you do, just to get around the is it junk or is it not junk issue, is look at some ordinance, and then that's, really stick it to them here. Look at some ordinance, and then let's put some other nuisance code in there, municipal planning act allows you to do that, uh, chapter four bubble allows you to do that. And then that will be, way we'll be prepared when it comes, with better ordinances that are more enforceable, so that's, that would be another, another way to go.
Okay. Senator Flory, Mayor, since you've raised the issue of modifying the code, could I address that just briefly?
Yeah, then I, I think that's fine, I'm just gonna give a second here, and before we discuss this council, but.
You know, I understand what Mr. Flory is saying about modifying the code, uh, but, but I would caution, yeah, people here talking about economic development trying to entice businesses to come here, there's a reason that codes are written generally, Mr. Flory knows that well, he'll explain them out to you. But if you start, if you start amending zoning codes to address specific properties, you're gonna walk a slippery slope there, where you're gonna create a situation that's be detrimental to businesses trying to come in. So I, I think you should be very careful on that.
Yeah, it's not numbers council's thing.
Yeah, it's not members of council saying that. We have councils that have management issues, so we're, we're good steers of the rules. Trust us.
Yeah, it was brought up as an option. To me, it's, it's a slippery slope, so.
I mean, the condition of the owner's property is so bad, I don't think it's that slippery to sell it all. And then you can easily adopt the ordinance to bring it, to bring it that kind of nuisance without affecting other businesses.
Can I ask you a question? I. Appreciate Brian's approach and I think it makes sense. My concern is what's the measure of success? If we don't move forward with the agreement on both sides of what. The end result should be. When we come to June or whatever it is. It's still open to interpretation from someone. As to whether it's acceptable. And we have to understand.
Would you amend your motion to say table it? Until a further date?
Sure.
And what we can do at that point is consider. How we, how we write our ordinance.
Yeah.
And better, better prepare language so then.
You just don't want to set indefinite.
I don't want to, I don't want to say. You know. He's got six months.
Sure, I, you know what I'm saying? If, if you say it's tabled, then, you know, it's tabled.
Indefinitely.
And then what we can do is direct staff.
Or give it a date if you think that's, well, I think that was kind of the panel we were. Starting down last month.
Table it for 60 days so staff can work with.
We can pursue multiple avenues that Mike has laid out for us, and I agree that we can be general in that code reform.
Tim, how do you feel about that?
So two things, I do not. Think we should amend your.
Okay.
We're walking a slippery slope of, well, we don't like this person, we'll just amend it.
I agree.
Well, so I don't, I understand where. Mike is coming from that we could, but this just opens a can of worms. It all of a sudden. To the, you know, the bank wants to do something and we want to amend it to make that. I don't want to do that. I, this has been dragged on for so long. This is, I would recommend reissuing the nuisance ordinance or notice. Give them 10 days and then go from there. Then we follow the procedural rule there. Where I do not recommend June. I was thinking March, let's get this thing done. Let's move forward and there should be no, no more of that. Because otherwise, I mean, yes, the notice would come in September, but you know in our, well, six months before that, it's been a nuisance. So I'm just, and I don't argue that you can't do business on a personal property. But I just think this has been dragged on for so long that it's just, you need some resolution there.
So just to clarify, I'm not, I'm not recommending doing some crazy, wow.
No.
What I'm really saying is, and this is. Not an offense to you, but your ordinance ain't so good. I think if you, if you.
We have other businesses that could use a better general.
Oh, and so I'm just saying, you were to compare your nuisance ordinance that would vary then, whatever. I'm not saying reinvent it. We only collect one property. I'm saying in general, it's clean. I don't think you should allow that property any time now. And I think there's other city codes that are more involved and people like advise this one or two times. So.
So we have most on the floor to table it till June, to do that. Or do we have a second? Dean or Jeff, I'm looking for a second to, uh, support the motion to. Take an issue till June, work on ordinance revision. And monitor progress. What I don't know, and I guess we'll see with a second. Ben on the second, I have a question. I'm not hearing a second on that particular motion. If we table this until June, from business standpoint. What is our notice requirement to capture what we've heard tonight is the progress made since the original notice? We still have to acknowledge that. I mean, we don't have the facts of finding. We don't have the current facts of finding.
I don't know what you're asking. Sorry.
So you referenced the fact that, you know. If you put this on agenda for a future meeting, to table this for a future meeting, we would need to update the images to be sure they were. Because our original notice, which the public has consumed, is not current. And not if you remember, the public has realized that oil drums are gone, they tap the vehicles. So. Currently on record, we have this. Two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four November nuisance item. But it doesn't reflect. The progress today, and I don't know what your recommendation is there. As we, as we move toward addressing this, do we have another notice requirement?
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to, well, first of all, you're going to have to review a notice. Anybody, you always have a notice requirement when you're going to set up a public hearing. You have to notify the affected property, the public hearing. And since what Brian's motion was that we don't, we don't know the date. I mean, I think basically what you were saying is. Kill June, but if Caroline writes. The terms in May is more appropriate, it's getting worse.
Or any one of us just wants to bring it forward, everyone has a right to do that.
So I think, I mean, I think the bigger issue is, and I don't, I don't think this is an issue, you know, based on this. But. He was kind of saying that he wants to work with the city, so I think he has a right. I mean, he's. He's requested an appeal here to the city council, because keep in mind, that is sort. Precedural, you issued, you issued a nuisance ordinance, a nuisance letter. Mr. Bitter appealed that, and that's why we're looking for the city council. Had he not appealed, we wouldn't even have to have a council meeting. So he has a right to have this. I mean, he has a right to have this resolved. So if he wants to exercise that, we can resolve it, but I think. I think he doesn't want us to resolve it based on this reason, he wants time to work with the city or whatever. So, if as long as he's acceptable with that, you can just continue it and then send another notice. Of whatever during now, whatever you have. Um, if you rather the council vote tonight, then maybe vote tonight. Or, or you can. You know, choose that you have a procedural defect. Going to not, uh. Adopt the resolution and then we'll just do this and then one other June, next month, whatever. Um, so long and quick, saying, no, I didn't table, you know, table. And just send a notice whenever we have here. I, I would be a little careful. In the motion to just say, you know, because I think Caroline's stuck. You know, till June, you know. Maybe just say. I already made the motion and then they'll.
I think someone else can, can try something.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize, I forgot.
Did you have a second?
That was cheap.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Well, I'm a little bit forced to try it. So, I mean, I, I think you should reissue the nuisance orders, include all three properties, redo the photos. Front and back of the property. I think we should update the nuisance, the nuisance ordinance. So send it to the planning and update it per your guidance, um, and, and go from there. That's, that will be mine and. It resets the dates. It gives you 10 days to re-appeal it. It'll probably come back here again. And then we can set a new date. Uh, but I just, my opinion is dragging this thing up till June, May, June, July is. Is ridiculous. So, I mean, I'm all for working with Mr. Bitter and beating this up. But there is stuff on that property. It hasn't moved in since September. So I, I just, I don't agree with that, but. That's what I would try to, but I'm open to whatever else.
I could set the motion.
All right, well, I mean, does that make sense to me? Well, who wants to ask Jeff? I mean, it's weird they're not here. You want to ask Jeff, maybe, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I'm really happy to hear what Jeff. Dean have to say about this.
I'd make a motion to do what, uh, Tim said to do.
Well, wait, I'm giving you the second for that motion, Jeff, but we'll see what we're able to. So the, as I heard, the motion is.
Well, I, I can.
Yeah, you can say it again.
Okay, so, all right, so the first one would be to not adopt the resolution we have today. Second one would be to reissue a nuisance ordinance to include all three properties. Um. Three would be to update photos. Corely. Um, five would be, or four would be, I think, four. Um, would be to update the nuisance ordinance, so send it to the planning, get updated to reflect, you can do a standard, you can do to make it better, to respect. Uh, and I think that was.
I, I mean, I think you can just say. Resend the notice and schedule a next. Okay, and direct Caroline to give the necessary, like.
Okay, well, whatever. I just want to make sure all three properties are entered in the notice, that we have it, you know, it's accurately reflected. Send it out and that's, that would be my motion.
Do a second.
Second.
Anything for the discussion?
I just say, I, I hope we get to a point where the property. Gets to a point where no one feels it's a nuisance anymore and, and maybe we don't have to do this, so.
And I, I think, to be fair, I mean, Lance has made a great deal of progress. I mean, I. I, he has. He's had a lot of stuff on there and he has moved a lot of stuff, so I'll give him that.
So before you go.
Can I get that motion read back to me?
Dean, go ahead. I'm sorry, you can hear yours first.
Yeah, can I get the motion read back to me?
Uh, Dean, before you do that, did you?
Yeah, we didn't close the public hearing. Dean, the motion is to reissue a notice capturing all three properties with updated photos. And address this at, or you can just, it'll be our next meeting.
That's fine.
And it will be on the agenda for the next meeting, so it'll have that same intent, a period and an opportunity for appeal.
Did I hear anything about, uh. Looking at the zoning ordinance of this?
Did you say there's a, are you looking at the zoning ordinance?
That could be a second, that could be a. Staff direction, give direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want part of the motion included, if that's not a deal, let's just direct staff.
I think Caroline, instead of you.
Yeah, Tim, Tim can address that in the spirit to do that. Or anything. Or I'm going to call back the role. So.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Ludley?
No.
Fred Meyer?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, during.
Yes. All right, thanks. Appreciate your counsel and the clarifications and the procedural issues. Anything further for us?
Yes, so, um. So the public hearing. Um. We closed the public, I just want to tell you, so you closed the public hearing now, you, you postponed it in what you postponed at the last meeting, which was not a license. You've now closed it. But we have to point out, we cannot notice another public hearing and just simply.
I think so. And we've heard, we've heard the same kind of reiterating said, and if the public leave or you are not given new information. We heard one, we've had one neighbor speaking in support of Mr. Bitter and that's for you too, so.
We can talk to Caroline if she wants to reopen the public hearing, check. Um. And then the exhibits that Mr. Keen has dropped out. Those are part of the record of the proceedings, so we need to make sure you're tracking those.
Okay.
And I, I would just ask you, like, along, can you look, maybe this is one too? Can you just label?
Maybe see it.
Stand there, mine. Just label them like, uh. Like by number, we're on to a three or something, so it's clear for the record. Is it, that is okay?
Okay. Hmm. Okay. We may need to just get together and run through whatever you think is up. So with that, thanks for your patience. I told Mike, this is obviously the item that we mostly, because it's listed on, he does not need to remain with us tonight, so allow him to take off. Same to the public, if you can, if you're in a business matter. Don't need to stay with us throughout our business. You're welcome to always and join us again if you wish. Uh, all right, with that. Um. We have a public hearing regarding changes to city code statute thirty-one regarding the park board developments in our last meeting. You on the line with the circuit?
Um, I don't think so. I think everyone's familiar with this. We just discussed it at council and now we're just codifying and. Basically, we're opening it up to any qualified residents or property owners in the city, maybe part of the park board.
So for members of the public, the park board has had a really great number of individuals who've participated in that because of wintering away and just other obligations related to work, they struggle and have form. So we looked at our requirements for park owners and. Technologically, they don't want to be a resident if they're a property business owner. They can also. Join us on the park board. So if nobody who's reviewed that, that's a change, um, that we're, uh, considering making any. Doing your motion on this one?
Out of the open.
Right, so I thought it was a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing, yeah, okay, all of the public hearing then. It is seven nineteen. Anybody who wants to make a little comment, please feel free to join us to. At the podium. Anybody online? You see anyone? What would come today? And remember, I'm all, I mean, help the Congress. Pretty important. Uncontroversial. I'll close the public hearing. I'm signing off.
I will do a minute.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, you want to hear the discussion? We'll call for a roll vote.
Ludley?
Yes.
Or? Yes. Solid.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Fred Meyer?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Wonderful. Only hope that helps you out. All right, and then under general business, uh, ten one, we need to elect our council president for twenty twenty-five. I am very sorry, it's pretty, um. Unremarkable. Who's our current? Right, okay.
Will you run? I just, I'm going to be insulted.
Unless you love doing it, um.
Well, you never had to do anything, so.
I usually make this.
I nominate two.
Zero or one meeting a year, so.
I'm staying with Tim.
Tim accepts. Anything for the discussion? We have a motion, Dean and Jeff, to, uh, have Tim serve as our council president for twenty twenty-five. First and second. All right, we call for a roll vote.
Solid.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Fred Meyer?
Yes. Laura? Yes. Ludley? Yes, during.
Yes, thank you, Tim. All right, so now we have a first lead of the park board. Uh. Co-chinants of the park board in the city is hereby created to be composed of five members who shall be qualified residents or are property owners in the city. They shall be appointed by the mayor, that's missing. Uh, and then they can qualify by council. When first created, one member, there's a little bit of text missing in that. When first created, one member shall be appointed for one year, one for two years, one for three years. Thereafter, each board member shall be appointed for a three-year term, except that agencies shall be filled with an expired term alone. Each board member shall take the old prescribed hours before assuming the duties of his or her office and shall continue in the office. Until his or her successor has been appointed or qualified. We don't have any action on that. Just thought we'd let everybody know, because we, we need interest. Okay, and then departmental account with Ms. Caroline, we.
Yeah, everyone's still exhausted, but. Um, I'm gonna. Try to. Okay, did everyone see that? No, okay, now everything stopped. Okay, why did it stop? Um. What happened? Okay. Yeah, I have to just maybe reconnect to the. Thing here. Ask and share, cast. Okay. And then we're going to share to our Zoom participants. Okay. All right, um. Just stop me. I, I always feel funny. That everyone's. Both ways, but I'm, the first is I wanted to just, um. Talk about the major accomplishments in twenty twenty-four by each department. We kind of skipped that last. Time for the budget. Um, and we talked a lot about the downtown street project and completing the athletic field. We also completed the Market Street Mill and Overlay project, opened a new dog park. Um, we, the Public Works Department installed new fencing under the bridge. They completed a bike shelter with the help of Bill Kay, Bill, you're even in the presentation, so. Um, we, they planted, um, three hundred sixty-eight trees. Um, they completed Veterans Park's upgrades with the new statue and plaques. We did a number of community outreach events like Touch a Truck, a citywide cleanup. The high school wastewater treatment plant tours, and there was jetting to clean out our sewers. Um, they have a new system adopted since a couple of years ago to track. Um, all their work orders that they've completed. And I included, sorry. Just some, um. Highlights from the year, sort of noting the support for the different special events in town, a lot of flood response recovery this year. Um, the snow events were down this year, so this was. These were twenty twenty-three old photos that I had from my last presentation. I asked Riley to send me. The picture from a couple of weeks ago. So a lot less salt, um, and San and Brian and a lot less, I think there were forty-three snow events in twenty twenty-three versus. Twenty-two this year. Um, emergency management, um, has a new director. And, um, he completed, uh, two certificate. Programs and then we had back-to-back flood response. Um, with this year being the thirteenth highest. Um, we secured over two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars in flood response. Um, with this year being the thirteenth highest, um, we secured over two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars in flood response grants. And we've been trying to be strategic about moving, um, amenities out of the athletic field into drier area. And good news, another priority project we had to take out of the CIP was adding riprap to the riverbank. And Riley has that in the, um, mitigation plan, so we are trying to get that funded by FEMA. Um, we've got new lighting along the Malone Bark Park Bike Path. Um, we also this year recovered the cost of staff labor and equipment, so we were able to move some money out of the general fund under Public Works and done a lot of regular updates. Um, for the pool highlights, it was another great year. They exceeded pool revenues by thirty-four sixty-three for revenues. Um, and we had a lot of people participating in the water aerobics. And then I just collected a couple, or Bridget collected a few testimonials about just how, um, those swim lessons really, um, impact the families that are able to participate in them. Here's our police calls for service, um, for some reason it's showing that it's about the same as twenty twenty-three. Well, is it, okay. Sorry. Um, and so it was steady this year, I think of highlighting is just the work that our, um, new investigator has done, and he, um, mainly, um, Dan increased the number of search warrants for, um, approved this year to twenty-nine. And then we had one hundred twenty-three misdemeanors and seventy-nine higher offenses this, this year as well. Um, and this was in the budget, but we, um, Joe collects just again testimonials from the community about just being grateful for how they were able to respond, um, to a client that had some challenges, and I'm just really glad that we have all that seniority that knows how to respond to a variety of calls. For the fire department, they were up seven calls, they had a hundred twenty runs. Um, they're adding three more volunteer firefighters. The airboat isn't in operations, we expanded the fire hall, they received over eight thousand dollars for training. Um, and they've also run a number of fundraisers that contribute back to their department. For the ambulance department, they were up two hundred seventeen calls, and that's again, it was our first, uh, full year of ALS. So that were, um, represents a lot of the ALS transfer requests that are coming in. And so one thing that Ryan is doing is, um, monitoring the percentage of transfers taken and seeing how we can improve that this year. So nine hundred nineteen calls, including transfers of the total, three hundred fifty-four were transfer requests, a hundred nineteen was taken. And I think, is it, I think even just the nine-one-one calls were up this year. I can't remember if it was thirty-one percent, but. Yes. Um, and billing revenue is up ten percent since last year and was seventy thousand more than budgeted. Um, they delivered CPR classes, an EMR course. Um, they did, in doing these ALS, um, transfers, they did eighty-two pre-hospital medications and twenty-nine ALS infusions on transfers. Um, even though the participation is not where we're at, we're very excited. We have full participation by townships this year and to contributing to the ambulance department. Here is our five-year call volume comparison of total calls. And sorry, you can't really see this line, but it's over the past, um, four years. And again, you can just see that uptick as we went to ALS. For the Wabashaw Public Library, um, you know, a steady year for them, it's just always impressive delivering, and the fact they delivered a hundred sixty-four programs, and they're different, they're for adults, they're for youth, they're for children. I'm always just also following their Facebook page and just amazed at all the different topics that they, um, deliver in a year. Um, and then for the city and port authority, we, I think, talked about this in the budget, but we totaled that we had four hundred sixty-two thousand dollars of federal and state grants that all the departments worked on. Um, but we helped manage at City Hall, we had, and the seven million in loans, and that was the loans and grants for the street projects. Um, our investments of our funds resulted in a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in revenues. Um, we collected three hundred twenty-nine thousand from the first year of the Army Corps partnership that we had, just moving sand, not yet even launching the barge terminal component. Um, our staff collected over three hundred eighty-one thousand in permits, lodging tax, leases and fees. Um, we lent money to projects to help businesses get started. Um, we worked on the fifty-unit downtown market rate apartment building and just getting that off the ground and hopefully starting, um, this coming year. Um, and then my other news is we secured an additional two million towards the Highway sixty realignment, so we're eighty percent funded on that project. Um, the National Eagle Center got a lot of great, uh, national media exposure. The port has continued discussions around childcare. And then I counted up the press releases that I wrote, there were sixteen, so I'm down from, I think, like forty that I tried to do my first year, but I'm, I'm pacing myself now, so. Um, here's building permits issued, you guys saw that before, I think we had a good year for issuing building permits and seeing new development in Wabashaw. So in conclusion, I know it was fast, but it was a big year, lots of projects. I think in our annual reviews, we always say it's gonna be a quiet year next year, and then something happens. Tony really wants it to be a quiet year. Um, but I think, so looking ahead to twenty twenty-five, I just want to note that one thing that we've started doing is trying to engage our employee in annual feedback surveys. So during our performance evaluations, I ask department heads to run the, their employees. I'm looking at Joe now, he hasn't done it yet, but he will. Um, just what keeps you working here, what would entice you away, um, what could you, what would you like to change? Um, how can we support you as our leaders? And I think people have an eye roll about it, but we have learned a lot, and I think it's good, it's probably better than the anonymous survey method, just like, if you can say, you know, I'm gonna ask you for feedback every year, that's going well. Um, we're also piloting the new paramedic program in St. Elizabeth's ER in twenty twenty-five. Um, we're now gonna implement flood mitigation projects, we have the money, but it's implementing those. Um, we're gonna hopefully start Mill and Overlay projects, easier street projects in twenty twenty-five, that's in the budget. We want to continue the discussion on the joint building. Um, we hope to begin the barge terminal construction project in twenty twenty-five. Um, that's a total of a four-point-five million dollar project. We are gonna start another winter haul for the Army Corps in the next couple of months. Um, I think we're gonna hopefully get full funding for the Highway sixty realignment. And so, um, one of my questions for the group then was the strategic plan was through twenty twenty-four. Are you interested in convening in a workshop again about, do we want to extend that, come up with new goals? Um, the other thing that came up, and I just added this a couple of hours ago, with the ambulance commission was a value statement, so it was suggested that the ambulance commission consider an ethics and value statement, and then we realized we just didn't have one for councils. So, um, there's templates out there that I found, if there's also interest in the strategic plan of saying, let's look at our vision a bit more, and let's adopt a council value statement, which would be ethical. I support the public interests and, and give examples of that. So it's not because no one isn't this, or it isn't a problem, but it's something we could publish and share with our commissions and things like that, so. Um, just looking for any feedback if I missed anything in the presentation. Um, and what are thoughts on another strategic planning process? Thank you.
When we set that strategic plan, I thought, I hope we aren't gonna drive Caroline and her department away from this city.
If somebody's talking, I can't hear them. We can't hear you.
And then challenging, I mean, it's challenging funding times, there's fire holes of money, but as many of us have realized sitting on our webinar to try to change whether projects are necessary for Wabashaw fit the funding priorities, and it's pretty disappointing. So to have kind of funding secured is amazing, have the federal support is amazing, and we'll get the state legislative support, so kind of have your legislators make sure they know that they're working for us here, and projects happening is what they're being held accountable for, so. So does everyone, um, may student, and.
No more plugs, no more.
No more plugs, no more.
And this is, never gets many likes or shares, but the new budget.
Hello, we can't hear you.
And the new, um, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, we can't hear you.
And that is on Facebook, so that any member of the public could just go to wabashaw.org and, you know, see all these, these documents, and I did a quick summary, and we'll probably do the property tax insert, so. Um, trying to make that available, also our budget, if anyone ever wants to kind of look back and just shows that we're being transparent, so.
We lost the owl.
Yep, yep, and then, yeah, they're all right there, oops. Um, so. Would. Would there be a group, because I already kind of had it drafted, is there a couple of you that would just volunteer to read through it and provide feedback, and then we could just put it on a future council agenda? Okay, all right. Okay, great. Great, that would be great. Um, and then I think on the vision statement, we could, a lot of people, Tyler was like, I don't know if we had one, so that's to call you out, but I don't think we promoted it, and we weren't, we didn't spend a lot of time on the vision, we were focused on the plan. So I think we could take a look at it and just say, do we want to tweak this a little bit, and, you know, so. Oh, somehow Dean's in the waiting room. Oh. Okay.
Dean, I don't know how long you've been in the waiting room, we were just talking about how great the departmental achievements are. We're interested in workshop in the strategic, strategic plan, not to give staff a whole new slate of projects, but just to revisit it and see how we're doing, and and then, uh, there's support for the, the vision and values, and Tim and I offered to take a look at those to see if they need to be refined or weakened anyway. And now the building discussion, so we discussed needing to workshop the topic of the combined building now after having a city building study. And it looks like staff wants some direction on information data that we want to see presented.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, how can we make that discussion productive? Um, are there, is there additional research or data? I mean, I think for me, I thought of, I will prepare just going back. Um, now I'll be reissuing a nuisance ordinance for the month of here, so don't make, maybe we, I don't know, I don't, we gotta pace ourselves, but I wanted to compare just again, look at some of Mike's taxing data that he provided us, and just kind of look at the financing component one more time. But I didn't know if, you know, tell us, I don't know, I didn't know if there, I didn't want to come to the workshop and then there were questions unanswered that would be helpful to staff to look at. So.
I just, I'm interested in how the authority can leverage that.
Okay.
One of those strategies.
Yeah.
So I definitely like to see that, because I'm like, it's a lot of detail, and I don't know where, how that would have been, if we, Caroline, or, you know, if we just kind of digest it, or we kind of swallowed it and then we're digesting. The other piece I'm interested in is staff inputs, department heads, anything you've heard from staff since we've seen that study? And I'd be curious if there's any post occupancy information from others, fishing nearby cities or comparable cities. And that's one thing to say, how do we design a building, there's always a way forward on that. But the learning of what does it mean to occupy, I mean, the period structure is more important to me. Um, and I don't know if they, or other cities that you're contacted have, you know, talk about, can talk specifically, it's one thing you can, if it's signed and say, well, how efficiency here, how efficiency there. Same lived experience that I think is more meaningful in terms of what we're, what we're going to achieve for the long term.
Okay.
And I'm not expecting some kind of a major report, which would be nice to, and people, people are saying, um, the nearby, the, the, there's a couple of departmental that are very near, probably all through them, if we wanted to, at least people, people then, um, understand kind of what their passion and experience.
What kind of feedback were you looking for from departments, just after listening to the presentation, if they had any new ideas, or what's are your thoughts?
This feels important, but be very long-term, versus just like, you know, that I can see this, you know, this way, I can really see that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think we can talk about that tomorrow at department's end meeting. Okay. Okay. And then do we want to workshop in February? Um, okay. And then what, do you prefer workshopping, so it's an intense, long day ahead of council, or a separate day? What does that mean? Oh, okay. Uh, what? What? You know what? I wonder if I, would I have unplugged from you?
We might have done a long workshop, we have a we have that discussion as well, that we, for easy play discussion.
I hold Joe's.
I unplugged from this, I can't prove it, that whole presentation, I hope it makes for itself, yeah.
This is why Tyler got set up, up there, because, okay.
Okay, can you hear us now? Can you hear us?
Can you see us?
Yes.
Okay. Where did we lose you guys?
Your video's gone too.
Did you hear Caroline's presentation about the permanent, uh, accomplishments?
No, we did not.
Okay, very sorry, it was a great presentation, it's a great PDF. Uh, it speaks for itself, the numbers, you know, from the service volume is incredible, but I'm sorry to get to hear Caroline enthusiastically present it, or for us enthusiastically receive it. But, um, it's been a good year, and we're thinking about a strategic plan, whether we want to revisit it or not, and there was a suggestion that we do. Not just to create a whole new strategic plan, but more as a touchstone for where we're at in terms of progress, and the many things that we have made progress on, as well as anything we want to add. And then a discussion about workshopping, the conversation on the possible combining building. And it was suggested that we take a. And it was suggested that we take a look at the financial strategies more closely that Mike and Bonnie outlined in our prior discussion, because when the study came out. We wanna know about port authorities role there, use of one or more of those strategies. And then Caroline wanted to know if we wanna combine workshop with a long day, you know, prior to council or if we want separately within in February. Tim's question was whether we could combine the building conversation workshop with the strategic planning workshop, do you guys have any thoughts?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, this is part of the strategic.
Jeff, when do you return?
Good with that.
When do you return, Jeff?
I'll be February first.
Okay, great, over top on February, so that'd be good. Everybody okay with a combined workshop on those two issues?
Yeah.
If you wanna, we can skim that, the vision out for a hand, okay, sounds good, we'll look for staff to find a date that works for them. Unless you wanna take a look now, but I don't have my.
No, yeah.
Okay, and the township contributions.
So I think my big question here was, we had gotten feedback from the ambulance commission that they wanted. Some media around um the fact that many townships are fully meeting our request. And there's a couple that haven't, and then there's this upcoming um township Tuesday where the final budget will be decided for next year. And we had talked about a mailing and then I received a suggestion from Brian about maybe just a press release and the goal of the press release would be to say. Township of Greenfield residents, we need you to come show up, support full funding for the ambulance, here's our request. Summarized how we calculated it and it's important to support rural EMS, but. How I normally do that is, you know, a press release, um, I don't know, I don't know, is this a letter to residents? You know, usually a press release would have quotes and, I don't know, I just, I just wanna, I don't wanna put out a public statement from the city of Wabashaw. Uh, I think we all feel strongly about it, but you know, tone matters, so, so what would be some? Are we in support of this, a letter, a public statement of sorts, and then is the tone just to say? We need your support at this meeting at X date and here's why, or is it, you know, well, I don't, I don't know, I guess. No.
No, we don't get to speak at all.
See, that's the thing, if it were a presentation on a part of the city, that's what you'd notice and then say citizens are encouraged to attend.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a tricky one, isn't it? And then, and the reason you suggested press release versus a mailing, just because of logistics?
I guess just cost, um.
I'm for a press release, I think you can highlight what we want or their support with. Things that we have advanced in this year and what we're looking to use that support for, right?
And the increased pressure.
Well, I mean, I think people need to understand, I grant they probably wanna understand that house having ALS is a benefit to them, but. It is, um, and we need to figure out how to best communicate and stuff like that.
But it's a strange meeting too, because it's not just. Citizens being there to support one thing or another, they actually vote on the budget, so the commissioners. Turn the meeting over to the residents and then the residents kind of essentially really do the voting, it's really weird. Cause that's what happened last time we were there, Ryan, you remember that?
Hmm.
And there was maybe six Greenfield township residents that came and they kinda just let them run the meeting themselves. So the commissioners just take a step back and then, you know, the the clerk and the attorney that can guide them, you know, here's what's on the table and they, they actually. Take the vote, the the people do, and the commissioners abstain. I'm pretty sure they abstain, I don't know if they get to vote on on that, so.
I don't remember them voting.
Yeah, but it's just, it's just, it's a total. Like role reversal thing and that's how their annual meetings run, so, so you know, the thinking was. If you get enough people educated, then concerned that go, they actually get to vote for it. And say, yes, I think we should do the funding and then, you know, if you got ten people there, it might carry the vote based on what we saw before.
Well, then regardless of cost, I think it needs to be incorrect, a direct call of action, because if we do a press release, we don't have control who picks it up, we don't have control over the time and the stuff, I don't doubt that, and we could do a great job covering it. But they will not make a call to action unless we. Write that into the press release that we desire that, and it's like, you know, who's gonna? Have, you know, a certain team, I could read what publication or, I just think that the press release idea has to get. Picked up by the press for that to be effective and then people are read that, so. Uh, not to say that press release wouldn't be valuable, because there's a broader education for the, you know, citizens of the county to understand. The the role of.
It's a direct mail that sits on the table or counter and they don't miss it.
Yeah. It's like a little letter of courage.
Those, yeah.
Yeah.
It would reach a lot more people if everyone got it, you know?
Yeah.
And then is it a lever, letter from Caroline Gregerson, like, dear Greenfield township president, you know, or is it?
No, I think it's a general notice, it doesn't have to be a letter, it can use this term, we can look at the most respective, most respective, um.
Okay.
And then, you know, we want an info page. Developed that can ask and furthers the the FAQ that people might wanna know about on our website that can be referenced on a postcard, doesn't mention those. You know, three-way fold, kind of, it doesn't be first-class mail. In fact, sometimes that's worse, because you don't, unless it's, has a stamp and is personally addressed, that that tends to. But, but postcard is a win.
Yeah.
So a direct mail postcard might be a good option.
Okay, yeah, we.
Not as awesome as you think.
We, yeah, we probably won't have mail to hire, you know, a professional to do this, so it'll be. Me and I'll just try to have the date and time for the meeting, I think we, being frank, it's coming from the city of Wabashaw. The city of Wabashaw ambulance and um. Something about, we need your support at this meeting for the Wabashaw ambulance service and show our numbers and. Calls or something and, I don't know, you can add it.
Total number of Greenfield township residences, that would be good, and then you'd be surprised if you reach out to a direct mail company, they they will do it more efficiently than the city hall, okay, they're just.
Oh, yeah, to do the mailing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of numbers and they'll wanna know, probably zip codes or something like that.
I think the county, we talked to a person that does the property tax inserts, it's a company and that takes our property inserts and then get it, gets it nailed to all the city. Residents and we just pay the bills, so maybe we can use the.
Right, it doesn't get fancy, it's just, it's really a notice.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I still, I don't think, it's not like there's an internet template for this, but if anyone has any ideas. Or what it could say or anything to get me an idea, but otherwise I will just, um.
I think.
Probably include some pictures and.
Yeah, I think we could pull ideas from Ryan's past, like PowerPoints.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's a, there was a lot of impactful statistics in in those.
Yeah, man, it's supposed to be reminded to those who've already done, kind of informed by that, yeah.
So it almost writes itself, I think, if we just.
I know the the ambulance thing did a kind of a media campaign, but it was more video, what if you call nine one one and no one answers and, you know, so I don't know. Little.
Yeah, that's, I think the images are good for our page, I don't think asking image during the postcard, you know, yeah, it's gonna be too expensive, so I think it just. It's information, you know, this, did you know blah blah blah, this is, this meeting's happening.
Okay.
Case, it's for the ambulance service in your service.
Okay, so don't worry about photos and stuff, okay.
I think we can drop, we can recycle that on Facebook, our Facebook page, and then it gets picked up by the other city pages.
What would be valuable is an actual image of a postcard, cause then people recognize it as reputable and associated with the city.
Okay, okay, so that is coming up in March, so that's another for first quarter goal we have to try to get that out, so.
Do you have an actual date of that housing meeting? First Tuesday, first Tuesday, first Tuesday?
No.
If it's, if it's the first Tuesday to the fourth, if it's the second Tuesday to the eleventh.
So I think we created a calendar invite, um. Lot of, a lot of, but, um, we do have a few, um. We do have some city staff, Greenfield township, uh, so I've, I've asked them to attend.
You're a lot of speed. Inborn. Trying to watch my text.
I think, I have, I heard from someone that their taxes went down this year, so I'm, I'm concerned that there's actually being more built in Greenfield township. Because they're not paying their fair share, we're just lowering costs when they're actually going up, but anyways, so, oh, well.
You got it, all right, uh, so now we have a resolution to accept the donations, there's small number at large and there are, to the library, five hundred dollars for anonymous, party one hundred dollars from Patricia Antonas' basket. To the ambulance service, two thousand dollars for anonymous, to the third department, five hundred dollars from Dan and Jenny, we have a motion to accept their. We have first, I'll say, give a second, first be Tim, second be Ryan, uh, and if there's a discussion, we'll call on a roll vote. Lauren.
Yeah.
Will, Will, yes. They saw one number.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Fred Meyer.
Yes.
Grant, yes. All right, should we receive your financials and email, does anybody have any other announcements, you know, with entertainment, what should we do, insurance, and. Good morning for convening.
Second.
Second John and Jack at the same time.
Good job.
And we'll take a roll vote, so.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Fred Meyer.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes, Will, yes, Grant.
Yes, thanks, everybody.